Good evening and welcome to the July 18th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. We'll be calling the meeting to order and I'll please ask everyone to silence their cellphones at this time. I'll introduce the board, starting with my far right, your far left is James Morris, who's an associate member of the board. Skipping down a few seats here, we're hoping to have at least one more member with us. My name is TJ Howery, I'm the chairman of the board. To my left is Ed Van Kuren, who is a full voting member, followed by Bob Dugan, who's a full voting member as well. Mary Berry is on your far right, my far left, and she is an associate member of the board. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is the office assistant and recording secretary for tonight. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town and considers requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the town bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and from the public, and also to allow full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to and from the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and then time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then ask questions to the applicant, and then the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comments should be directed only at the project, and we also ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. But such public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or it just might simply be a nature, uh, I'm sorry, a question about the nature of the project. The board will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair. You should come to the podium to the right here. We ask you to please state your name and address for the record. And we also limit public comment to two minutes per person. We will then either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision, by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, the board may continue the hearing to a future date in time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. As for any board discussion and possible decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to either deny or approve what be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote such as a three to two vote is a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return for two years unless the project is substantially different than originally proposed. So turning to the agenda that we have for tonight, we have two continuations, we have three new hearings, and we also have a few things on our open meeting agenda item. So, we can at least take, I think, second item out of order since it's a continuance?
Yes, I'll make a motion to take open meeting item, Board Administrative Approval Number 46-18, Groom, 70 Ostrom Road, Rockaway, out of order.
The motion was made by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Matt Terry of the firm Amen Clower in Falmouth. I am here this evening representing the petitioners Mott and Barbara Groom. They are the owners of 70 Ostrom Road in Rockaway. They were granted a variance last year by this board in order to enable them to construct a home on their property at 70 Ostrom Road. Subsequent to the approval of the variance by the board, my clients explored building options, found that due to the construction costs and other factors, that it was economically infeasible for them to construct as approved at 70 Ostrom, and so they marketed the lot for sale. They are currently under contract with a buyer to purchase the lot and to build in accordance with the variance issued last year. The variance by its terms expires on October 5th of this year, and so I'm here before you this evening asking for an extension of the variance under section 242-06 of the zoning bylaw and section 40A, or chapter 40A rather, section 10 of Mass. General Laws. The application that I had submitted to the board asked for a one-year extension, but Mass. General Laws, chapter 40A, section 10 limits extensions to six months. So I'd like to ask for a six-month extension that will allow the real estate transaction to close and the new owners to continue with design plans and to seek approval, additional approvals for construction, including appearing before the conservation commission, which was a condition of the variance issued last year. At this point, I'm willing to entertain questions from the board.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So I think Mass. General Law now allows special permits and variances to be three years, so I'm assuming this application was before the change of the law?
So that change was relative to special permits bumping up the time from two to three years. For variances, it remained at one year, and the law was changed to allow for a six-month extension if applied for during the one-year period of the initial variance grant.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
No questions.
None.
All right, how would the board like to proceed? And I think we need, Noreen, we would at least need an alternate to... We'll give that to James for this one.
So I'd make a motion to approve the extension?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Bob to extend it six months, second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I think we can take...
Take a recess.
We could take second continuation out of order, I think they're asking for continuance.
Are they here?
It's a good question.
No.
No?
But you can just do it administratively if you want. That's what they're not expecting to attempt.
This is Jerry's command now.
Fantastic. Yes, we have. Not to put Jerry on the spot, but this is Jerry Potamus, who is a full voting member of the board, we'll let him settle in just for a second.
Am I voting on this?
Uh, we're in the middle of applications right now, so you're good.
Oh, I'm good. Condolences for those of you who know me.
So, start from the top then?
So, just want to go with Shay?
Sure. All right, back to our continuations, we have application 25-19, Shay, zero, Nathan Ellis Highway in North Falmouth.
We don't need to appoint because we're going to...
I have previously been appointed, James is already on it.
You were previously appointed? Okay, so that we, yep, that will give us four, and James is five, so... James was previously appointed on this, he'll continue to be appointed on this application. Do we have anything to read in at all, or...
Just a, let me just get the... So Frank Duffy, Town Council, did send a response to our question regarding the easement, if that could be used to affect a variance. The answer came back, "I found one reference to an electric easement as a condition supporting a variance," which is Deion versus Board of Appeals of Waltham, 344 Mass., dot 547. It was from 1962. Then he put in his book, Massachusetts Land Use Planning Law, Mark Brabowski reports that this decision was based upon the pre-existing 1976 zoning enabling act and likely would not survive judicial view under the current version of General Laws C. 40A. The old C. 40A allowed variances due to conditions especially affecting such lot, but the current C. 40A limits variances to lots burdened by unusual soil conditions, shape, or typography." And that's the only new letter we have in the file.
Okay, thank you. And for the applicant tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicant, Michael Shay. Deion v. Board of Appeals of Waltham was a case that I actually referenced at our last hearing, and I didn't find that it was applicable mainly, and the reason I cited it at that point was it was a use variance as opposed to a setback or dimensional variance. There is case law that states pretty clearly that dimensional variances carry a fairly low threshold for burden. I hadn't received, I hadn't been aware that Attorney Duffy had submitted a response prior to this moment, so I don't have a more formal response prepared for that as of yet. But I think it's telling that this board has found, on at least two occasions, that an easement affecting a property can in fact be grounds for a variance. And they found that both on this particular site in 2009 and on the abutting site at 28 Nathan Ellis Highway in 2000, when they granted a variance for that house to be built less than 75 feet from the, from the front yard designation, from the front yard setback. In that case, it was 65 feet, and in 2009, this board approved a variance that allowed for a setback of 42 feet. What we're requesting today is a setback of 43 feet, which is small, larger than what was, or smaller, I guess, deviation than what was previously approved. It's a minorly smaller, but it is still smaller. And I think what's important is to consider this in relation to chapter 40A, section 6 of the Massachusetts general laws. It basically says that any change to a lot, to a lot, or any change to zoning requirements, whether that be yard or depth requirements, should not render an otherwise buildable lot unbuildable. And this lot was buildable in 1980 when it was purchased, and in 1986, when that zoning bylaw changed to increase the setback from 35 feet to 75 feet, this lot was not held in any common ownership. And Massachusetts general law states pretty clearly that it should not, that should not render a lot unbuildable. And the way that that would not be rendered unbuildable is by this board granting a variance. That's the cleanest and simplest way for this lot to remain a buildable lot as is intended by the Massachusetts general laws. I don't know that there's much I can add beyond the information we presented over the last two hearings, so I'd be happy to address any questions this board may have. And again, I would ask, just kind of given the finality of the decision and sort of the uncertainty of it, that there'd be some discussion prior to closing it.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. James, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Jerry?
Since you aren't aware of Attorney Duffy's response, although you seem to be familiar with the case, do you think you would need any additional, although you didn't ask for it, to provide a more legal review of case law and things like that?
There's very limited case law with regards to, and I think Attorney Duffy's note reflects that, there's very limited case law with regards to the granting of a variance based on an easement on a site. He was only able to find one case, I was only able to find that same case. There is substantial case law about the granting of a dimensional variance and essentially the lower threshold that is set for something of that nature. Ultimately, I suspect this board has enough information to make the decision, but if that's going to be what gets us over the hill, so to speak, I'd be happy to take some additional time, but we are under a purchase and sale agreement, and we are running up against time constraints. And, you know, I don't want to take more of this board's time on this matter than we need to.
Thank you.
I do have a question, that's to Noreen. Noreen, if you're aware, does the current version of 242-03A, was that written before the change of zoning enabling act that Mr. Duffy referenced? Or is this a more modern version?
I could not tell you.
The only reason I ask is getting hung up on the word that structures is listed in our bylaw, and clearly the telephone pole that's listed that's on this particular property would qualify based on our definition of what a structure is. Gives the argument of counsel, I think, a little bit greater weight.
Anything else? All right.
It does look like there was one amendment to that section in 1985, but that may have been strictly to modification or change in use as opposed to dimension, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, Noreen. Bob, anything?
No questions.
Mary?
No questions.
Okay, and I don't have any questions either. So we'll just turn it to members of the public if you have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project. Everyone's here for something else tonight, all right. Back to the board.
Should we have a discussion first, or is...
I think we should.
Counsel knows where we're...
Anyone wants to stop, feel free.
So I'll start off, because I'm the one that wanted the information from Town Council. I'd like to be able to give the variance, I just don't think that this variance meets what the current definition that they're telling us needs to meet for lot dimensions, topography, or soil conditions. I know James mentioned the pole, and I would consider the pole if it wasn't in the easement. If the pole wasn't in the easement, we could say that's a separate structure, but even if the pole wasn't there in its current location, the easement is still what's regulating the use on the lot. Also the comments from Brabowski that even the former decision or that one, he doesn't think would hold up in court anymore, so I would tend not to grant the easement just because I don't feel it meets the definition that we're allowed to use to grant a variance.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. I, would you prefer if I hold my comments till the board's had a chance to speak, and then I can offer some thoughts, or...
Sure, sure.
Or I can, I don't want to get into a situation where I'm trying to rebut or answer every comment, so would you prefer that I hold them all kind of towards the end?
If you could, we'll avoid the back and forth.
Yep.
We'll allow you time to address any concerns from the board. What do you think, or anyone else?
I think, although it's a difficult question, I think we should grant the variance given the history of this particular parcel. It wasn't necessarily clear cut to Town Council, even though he might, even if it was clear cut, he might not want to address what a court could address. Brabowski's book was kind of old. I think council's presented some reasons that we could take in total and say, although variance shouldn't be given, we could give it in this case for the fact pattern that's previously been given and not set a precedent just because you have an easement in your backyard that you have a irregular shaped parcel. So I guess I would have a tendency to vote we grant it.
I'm going to join Jerry's sentiment. I think council's letter to us, while it's not controlling, is compelling, but the fact that this board previously granted a variance in 2009 because of the electrical easement, they granted a similar easement to the neighbor in 2000 because of the electrical easement, and this particular property with the pole in there, I think it gives a little teeth to the teeth that I need to, in terms of a structure being there that makes the lot unusual, and it's a reasonable relief. The other two prongs of to grant the easement have clearly been demonstrated.
I'm all for issuing the variance, all right?
I just had a question on that because I didn't see the file. So was there something that was granted to the neighbor just because of the utility easement?
I can address that. The 2000 variance to the neighbor at 38 or 28 Nathan Ellis Highway included language that said, "The applicant has demonstrated a uniquely shaped lot due to the comm electrical easement that runs across the property. The board finds that the applicant has demonstrated the necessary criteria for the granting of a variance." And it says, "This is unique to the property and not the general zoning district. The board finds this creates a hardship for the applicant to place a home within the area that would comply with the required setbacks."
And that was for the neighbor's property?
That was for the neighbor's property in 2000, and then in 2009, this board also included a statement that there was a shape issue due to the electrical easement going through the property as well as a change in the zoning setback that was approved by the town five years after the applicant purchased the property. "The shape of the subject property is entirely constrained from the easement," and the findings included language that says, "The easement contains a pole on a property, which meets the definition of a structure, and the zoning bylaw states that variance can be granted due to the conditions of the land or structures on the site," and that the easement, another additional finding said that "the easement creates hardship in consideration of the front yard setbacks."
And I guess I'm the only one who hasn't tried it yet. Mary, would you, any comment? I know that you're not voting on this, but...
Well, I took a look at it, and I looked at the file, and I read through it. My feeling was that you have zoning, and you have your bylaws, and my reading of the bylaws were that it didn't meet the items set forth that we would have to find in order to approve a variance.
Thank you, Mary. So I'm actually inclined to agree with Jerry and James regarding the project. I do appreciate Town Council's input, and Attorney Clower, even though you referenced other properties, I bear in mind that every project before us is different, where there's really no precedent set through the board, and certainly acknowledging that the board has recognized in the past decisions that neighboring properties, they've found variances, and this board too has found a variance on this same property in the past. And at the same time, I am acknowledging that perhaps problems or issues, decisions could be made wrong in the past, but I'm inclined to approve the project with the variance. So that's...
I'm good then.
He can count to four.
Stop talking. You don't want to snatch defeat from the jaws of victory?
No.
I will say one thing, though, you probably want to stop. It's a shame that Ken's not here, because I think Ken had issues with this as well, and you revealed to us it was...
He corrected me, he pulled me aside last meeting, because I said he made the motion to approve, and he seconded the motion to approve.
Right.
He wanted to point that out to me. For the record, for the record, I will correct that. I said that he had made the motion to approve, and I was incorrect. He seconded the motion to approve, although he didn't make the motion to close.
Very good.
Can I just ask Mr. Clower a question? I just have one question. If this was granted, and then somebody did appeal, in just your personal opinion, do you think the court would support the easement?
I do.
As a definition of a lot change?
I do, because it does constrain, it affects the shape of, affects the shape of the lot, it affects the use of the lot, and, you know, we've talked about the effect of, you know, the inability to build given the change in the zoning requirements. So in conjunction with not only the shape of the lot, but also with chapter 48, section 6, I do think the court would support this finding, would support the grant of a variance if one was approved.
Does he have another follow-up question, Ash? Your position is that absent the variance, this is now an unbuildable lot?
Correct.
Do you think the court would consider...
Which runs...
Absent the variance, basically essentially a regulatory taking by the town?
That's exactly what I would say. And I think that the variance is the means of granting relief from that regulatory taking and complying with chapter 48, section 6, which says that you can't render an otherwise buildable lot unbuildable due to a change in zoning regulations.
It's been interesting case law recently with regard to regulatory taking.
That was, that was wetlands regulations.
So that would make...
Not just that one case, though.
So that would make this unique, so that if we have people that start coming before us looking for variances based on easements?
I think every situation is unique, and most lots don't have a 75-foot setback. You know, typically we see a 25-foot setback, or in some cases, a 20-foot setback. But we, this is the, one of the only areas where you have a setback of, of this magnitude, which impacts such a, such a wide area of the lot. And but for that easement, this wouldn't be an issue. So it's, it is a unique situation. It doesn't affect the zoning area a, as a whole, which is one of the prongs of, of the question.
And actually, one other thing. Actually, what you're saying is, given this could meet or would meet the definition of a regulatory taking, I'd feel much more com- comfortable, uh, voting to grant it and then let someone opposing it go to for judicial relief and, uh, have a far more thorough legal review of the situation.
Well, with the comments on the regulatory taking, I, I would, I'd be more in favor of granting it, because that gives you more of a unique issue. I, I just, I did, I don't wanna be stuck in situations where, you know, people think that we're making a definition that easements are, are allowing variances, and then you got luck. So with that as a regulatory issue, then I would be in favor of, of, uh, granting the variance.
If it's good, you let us talk a little more. One just came on, so...
I'm not gonna push my luck.
Do you need a vote to close the hearing?
I think we would.
So motion to close?
I'll second.
Okay, motion closed by Bob, and I'll give that second to Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Not everyone who wants.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
All right.
I'll second.
On the findings?
I think they've met the burden of proof of, uh, a variance for two forty dash two oh three, uh, and specifically, uh, referencing Attorney Clower's letter, which I could not articulate from memory. And I don't think I have to read it into, into, uh, minutes. I think it's, to me, it's self-explanatory.
So I'd like to add into the findings that the issues regarding that, the regulatory taking would be something that would come into play? 'Cause I think that's really the thing that makes the uniqueness of the lot more than the, more than the variant, and the, more than the easement. Uh, we can do a finding that there is a pole, but the pole is placed in the easement. Should we make a finding that the, uh, they're extending the distance, I think, by one foot over the previous var, uh, variance for setback?
I think having an explicit finding that we've, uh, the board's previously found a variance in the past is good.
For this particular property, though?
Right, for this particular property.
And then we're basing this on lot shape versus soil conditions or topography?
Dimensional.
Yep, dimensional.
Dimensional and use, I think that was the term Attorney Clower used.
Dimensional regulations.
Yep.
Any other findings?
I think that's it. Just conditions, just per plans.
Someone's at my front door.
Can you see who it is?
Yes.
All right, so that does it for findings and conditions. Motion to approve was made by Bob and seconded by James. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that brings us to second continuation of the night. Application twenty-nine dash nineteen, Swain, uh, twenty-six, is it Viber Lane?
Twenty-six Viber Lane.
In East Falmouth?
Is anybody here?
I don't know.
So this is just being continued, so we won't open the file?
Yeah, but you can just mention that they sent, uh, an email request to continue, or I can let you know.
So we did get a letter from the applicant that due to my meeting with the planning board, I'd like to postpone tonight's meeting until August first. He has submitted new plans, and they're not going to do the addition on the garage and just use it as is. And he will forward the plot plans once they're completed. So I would make a motion to continue to August first.
Seconded. All right, motion to continue to August first here at Town Hall, six thirty. That was made, that was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye. Can we take a short recess, 'cause I have to get one more of these signed if we're going on to Pheasant?
I think that's, is that marked up last, uh? I thought it was going by the...
Yeah, I'm reading the other agenda, I guess.
I was going by this one. Yeah?
So, application number thirty-seven dash nineteen, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws, you're hereby notified that Stephen E. Gellis, trustee of WABN Mass, has applied to Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C of the Code of Falmouth to construct dormers to the rear of the pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling on subject property known as twenty-four Spencer Baird Road, Woods Hole, Mass. For referrals, concom, no comment. Fire department, no comment. Water, not applicable. Assessors, no comment. Planning, no comment. Health, uh, property is on town sewer. The applicant was heard by the Board of Health on January seventh, nineteen. In accordance with the town's flow-neutral bylaw, Board of Health referral requirement, the ZBA should check with the Board of Selectmen and Waste Water Department to ensure that the applicant was improved to increase sewer flow. And then we do have an email from Amy Lowell. "The Board of Selectmen voted a variance under the Flow Neutral Bylaw on April twenty-second, twenty nineteen, for proposed work at twenty-four Spencer Baird Road." So they have met the flow-neutral.
And that does it for...
That does it for referrals. There, there are, um, he did do a bulk calculation worksheet that's in here to include with the application.
Great. Okay, for the applicant tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Jonathan Poloney, uh, Falmouth, or the applicant, from Spencer Baird. Um, we are here, um, requesting a special permit to increase, uh, habitable space in the attic, um, of the, of the building. Um, as you noted, we did receive a variance to increase the sewer flow under the bylaw. Um, I believe a copy of the variance is included with the packet. Um, I think just to kind of explain why we're here for a special permit, um, part of the reason is, given the small size of the lot, like many of the other lots in this area, um, they're a small size, around eight thousand square feet. Um, most of these lots exceed lot coverage, um, so they're pre-existing, non-conforming. Um, there are a couple of encroachments. There's an encroachment of the front yard setback. The house does not encroach, but the front steps encroach within twenty-five feet. Um, there is a slight encroachment by the chimney, but I don't think that's actually included in, um, or, or doesn't affect the side yard setback. The garage is another, um, encroachment on the side yard setback, but the garage itself is not being affected by what's being proposed today. So it's just with the house. Um, so we're asking under section two forty dash three C for a special permit to increase the habitable space, um, within the footprint of the existing building. So you should have copies of the architectural plans in front of you that show the actual proposed addition, which is just two dormers that are gonna project towards the rear of the lot. And this is gonna allow, um, uh, children's bedrooms to be included up there. Um, this is a summer residence. Uh, the Gellises have been coming to Woods Hole for, uh, quite some time. Um, they brought the property, um, they bought this particular property a little while ago. And as the family has grown, there's more children now occupying the house. So they're proposing to add two bedrooms for some of the grandkids to have a place to stay up there. Um, the dormers that are proposed do add a slight increase to the height in order to allow the seven-foot, um, rise that you need within the room in order for it to be considered habitable. Um, but it does not exceed thirty-five feet. I think the actual height is thirty-one point nine feet. I have just some blowups. Gonna be stamped in. So that shows the, that's a close-up of the, um, of the area that's being improved. And what I've highlighted is the area of habitable space that's been identified by the architect. Um, and this kinda gets to a point where I had a discussion with the building commissioner, who had a, we had a little bit of a disagreement on how you view habitable space. Um, if you look at the definition of half-story in the zoning bylaw, um, half-story is defined as that portion of a building under any type of a sloping roof, which is potentially habitable as defined under the Massachusetts Building Code. And it has to be half of the size of the story below. So based on the architect's calculations, the five eighteen square feet of habitable space that exists there with, with the dormers is, meets the definition of a half-story. Um, and I believe that the building commissioner's opinion was that the habitable space, or the potential habitable space, should go all the way to the wall, under the ceiling, opposite the dormers, where the slope of the ceiling comes down kind of across the room. And the issue of that, and what's highlighted there, is that edge is where, is the five-foot mark. So the only area that's included in what's highlighted is area that's over five feet. And the reason why that's important is because when you look at the actual building code, which I've made copies for you, if I can give them to you. So when you look at section R three oh four of the building code, um, it addresses what's considered potentially habitable. At R three oh four point three, height effect on the room, those portions of a room with a sloping ceiling measuring less than five feet shall not be considered as contributing to the minimum required habitable area for that room. So that, that's where we come up with this calculation. This isn't an arbitrary line drawing. This is actually from the building code. So I think there was just a little bit of confusion, I think, about the definition of half-story in the zoning code and how habitable area is actually defined in the building code. And I know that the building commissioner is here and wants him done, if you'd like to address him. I think he's willing to do that. It's also addressed in that, on that same page that I've just given you. Ceiling height. The required floor area of the room shall have a ceiling height of not less than five feet, and not less than fifty percent of the required floor area shall have a ceiling height of not less than seven feet. So again, it's kind of really setting out the definition for how you find habitable space. And I think that we meet the definition under the building code. The last thing that I'll say is that I've also looked at the sanitary code, um, the state sanitary code, which comes up with landlord-tenant situations where you might have an issue with how habitable space is defined. Um, so if you were, I think, to take a more broad view of potentially habitable space, including areas that are below five feet, what the sanitary code is, that in computing the total floor area for determining occupancy, where the ceiling height is less than five feet shall not be considered for that purpose. So there's a potential conflict with that as well, although the sanitary code is not referenced in the zoning bylaw definition of half-story. Um, so with that, I think that we meet the definition of half-story. Um, the special permit, um, is just to allow the creation of that habitable space for children's bedrooms up in the attic. If you have any further questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you. Mary, would you like to start us off?
Who's the voting member?
Oh, we need one. Um, it was James last time, so Mary will, uh, have you be appointed as a voting member. Bob, anything?
Yeah, so I have a question. So on that half-story, on that under-five-foot section, uh, why wouldn't you have just closed it off and used it as cold storage space, or? What are you using it for?
Um, I mean, it's, it's just open area.
So is, does it have any use at all?
I mean, you could put toys over there, you could stack blankets, you could move chairs around.
So would you have an issue if we conditioned it that that space be closed off for cold storage only?
Um, I'd have to talk to my client about that.
Could we hear from the building commissioner regarding that area that's under five feet?
Could I just ask him one question before he leaves? Uh, how do you think, what, how do you think the, the building code versus the zoning code controls? Since this is a zoning matter, shouldn't the zoning bylaw control?
Well, I think the zoning bylaw does control, but it references the building code in the definition of half-story. It specifically points to potentially habitable space as defined in the building code. So that's, that's the reason why I bring up the building code. I only bring up the sanitary code as kind of a buttress to what I find the building code to be saying.
So we could approve, and he could reject?
The building?
Yeah. If he has a different, different definition of building code.
That wasn't what I took away from my conversation with him?
Then he's gonna definitely...
But...
Mr. Palmer, I, I assume you might have been here on a different application. Hate to put you on the spot, but if you wish to make any comments?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rod Palmer, Falmouth Building Commissioner. Um, I did have a conversation with Jonathan earlier today and, uh, a few weeks ago. And the discussion we had was the, the five-foot, uh, requirement. So in the building code, it talks about, um, for design purposes, it's more for design purposes. That area below five feet, um, cannot be recognized as, uh, space for designing. So some rooms have minimum size requirements. Seventy square feet is a, is a, is a number that's recognized. So those rooms that have ceiling heights less than five feet, um, those areas beyond that five feet cannot be part of the seventy square feet. So for design purposes, the five feet is important. Uh, the building code, um, when you look at habitable, the definition of habitable space, I think it excludes hallways, bathrooms, toilet rooms, storage rooms, and, and such. So when you create a room, maybe it's three hundred square feet, that area below five feet may still be used. It still may be habitable space. It's still a conditioned space. It's just not recognized in the, for design purposes.
Any questions for the building commissioner?
I know what he says, I'm not sure what he means.
I mean, I, I think this is a reasonable request. I'm not opposed to this application. I think it's practical, I think it's reasonable. I just thought it would be important to, for this to be vetted this evening for, for this application and, and future applications.
Thank you.
So that five-foot mark, that's in reference to the, for lack of a better term, the, the two wall coves that are coming off the back there?
Yeah, so you could have a room where, you know, that has a sloped ceiling. And, you know, beyond that five feet, well, it could go all the way to the floor. So you might have another hundred square feet beyond that five foot. It's still usable, it's still habitable, it's just not recognized for design purposes. So I think it's important for this application and others down the road that we... So I think it's important for this application and others down the road that we sort of understand what that space is.
If those two spaces were scaled back to run flush with what's the, the middle of the proposed half-story, would there be any issue at all with regard to that five feet?
I'm not sure I understand.
If you were to eliminate it? Going to make it flush with the middle here?
Yeah, I don't know how that would affect the room. You know, that, that might make it not a feasible project and, you know, I'm not here to kill the project. I just thought it would be, I think it would be helpful for us all to understand what is the five feet, you know, and what is, what its purpose is in the building code. And that is to, for design purposes, that area can't be calculated towards the minimum square footage of a room.
Thank you. We appreciate you here and.
All right.
It's an interesting issue that I don't think we've dealt with yet. Thank you for your input.
All right.
Any other questions for the applicant?
The, I realize this is facing, we're onto Barnack or, yeah, Barnack Road. Is the lot abutting it, is that the vacant MBL grass parking lot this would be?
It might be. I'm not totally sure, but it might be. Yeah, there are a couple MBL lots that are rather large vacant lots. Most of their lots are similar to this lot.
For any other questions that this abutters? Thank you.
And I, I do want to note actually one thing from the lot coverage calculations, that there are at least five other houses within this area that have dormers off of the roof, and two of those houses are two and a half stories with dormers. So that kind of, I mean, I'm not making that argument for the habitability, I'm making that argument for it fits within the general character of the surrounding area. That's kind of more the, meeting the special permit definition.
Wasn't the character that neighborhood where I grew up there, but it is now.
Yeah. If, if I can just say one thing in terms of the habitability though, I mean, I understand the building commissioner kind of pointing to the design standards of the building code. I think it is interesting though that the sanitary code mirrors that same five feet because the sanitary code really is talking about habitability. You do have an issue if you have a tenant in a house that's supposed to be habitable where if the room is under five feet and you're considering that habitable space, the Board of Health might have a different opinion weighing in on that if that's actually room that can be used as habitable space. So I think when you consider everything altogether, that really lends itself to, I think, the interpretation that we're putting forward, which I think is reasonable. I've also included in the calculation the closet and the bathroom as contributing to the total lot area. In, in my conversation with the architect who drew the plans, he felt that that was a sensible thing when you're looking at this five-foot determination so that you're not adding in large closets in order to get the required habitable space and yet, you know, opening them up and putting a bed in there or something, you know, that kind of, which, you know, does happen in certain projects. So this seems like a very kind of, a clear line that you could draw that the habitable space is determined by this five-foot height.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a follow-up. So, so on the, on the architecture you plan, you show William Rolansky, and you show furniture placement, you show beds placed in that lower than five-foot area space?
I did notice that.
Other furniture. But you just said that you wouldn't use that space. I, I thi, you see where I'm coming from?
I do.
We've seen a lot of these projects before with these third floors. This is the first one I've ever seen with them keeping that space open.
So you would be happy if there was an actual?
I, I, if it were, if it were for your calculations, if it was wallowed off?
That, that's something that I can approach them about.
Anything else from the board right now?
I just, my own personal experience, I had a summered for thirty years in a cottage with one and a half stories. And I guarantee you that we had a double bed less than, in the less than five feet. So it works. You don't get up quickly in the middle of the night. But it works and, you know, I fully understand it.
Yeah.
We'll turn it to the public. Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? Anyone out there at all? No? Okay. Back to the board. Like to have some quick board discussion maybe or?
So I don't know what their timeline is, but if they might be amenable to closing that space off and it's something that works, I just think it meets our definitions better. You know, we're dealing a lot with these third-floor rooms now.
But, but why? I mean, functionally, it's going to be an awkward bedroom at best.
Because we're doing a third floor, we're, we're, we have, we have limitations on size.
Each case is case by case. This is not like it was going to be rented out. I mean, I guess we could continue it, we could see if the board felt we needed the additional information. I think it's an undue burden for a regulation that means well, but may not necessarily fit this particular case. I hope we're not saying people can't go into a two and a half story building and sleep because I don't know if that's within our purview. I mean, if it's being rented, it's controlled by others, but for zoning use and things like that.
So we don't have control over rentals or whatever they decide to do in the future is their own personal, you know, decisions. If the space works out with that area closed off and allows them enough space to fit in what they need, bedroom space, and they, sounds like they might be amenable to it, I just think that's an easier way to go.
I'd vote for it as submitted. Yeah, I think they mentioned there's kids involved, they don't need the headroom, place to store toys and stuff like that. I'd go for it the way it is.
I obviously agree with that.
I tend to agree with Bob, especially with, just want to read over this language and especially if the, if the applicant may be amenable to that, I, I think it's worth asking.
If the architect were able to be here this night, we might be able to just go talk and hash it out, but I think since he's not, if you'd like me to have the conversation, I can do that and come back.
I mean, that would also give us the time just to review what was submitted tonight.
So who asked for the continuous? Us or the applicant? I think it's the applicant.
Well, see, James, any strong feelings on this?
Oh, sorry, James.
Or Mary, any, any strong opinions either way? No? Mary, yourself? Any strong opinions either way, Bob?
I don't, I, I think if they're amenable to closing it off, it would, it would be nice, but I don't have a strong opinion.
Okay. So I, I would like it if you could reach out to your client, maybe discuss the issue with the architect and see what comes of it.
If, if we continued, what's our soonest date?
Uh, next.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't take too long, is it?
Yeah, uh, next date is August first. Going to have a.
Would that be enough time, August first?
Absolutely.
Okay. Would anyone like to make that motion?
So I'd like to make a motion to continue to August first.
Second it.
Motion to continue to August first made by Bob and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next we have application thirty-six dash nineteen Nicholson, fourteen Beatrice Lane in North Falmouth.
So application number thirty-six dash nineteen. List of abutters is on file on the House of the Board of Appeals, town all mass. Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight, we hereby notify that Thomas E. and Colleen E. Nicholson of North Falmouth have applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash sixty-nine E. and two forty dash three C. of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on property known as fourteen Beatrice Street, North Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. From engineering, this application was reviewed only for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Beatrice Street is a public right of way in this area up to point of curvature only, and Hunt Street is a private right of way in this area. See below notes that the lines are the right of way, the pavement edges are further inside these, so where the proposed driveway connects is within the town right of way. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or abutters of rights of way. The plan shows a proposed paved driveway connecting to Beatrice Street within the town right of way. A driveway permit from DPW Engineering Division will be required. What is shown on the plan would receive an approved permit. Town will not accept stormwater runoff from impervious driveways. We request that the Beatrice, that the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from the engineering division prior to closing the hearing for this special permit, or that the board include the following condition if the special permit is approved. And the condition would be the applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. They also recommend as usual dry wells, rain gardens, or stormwater measures. Water department, the water service needs to be upgraded from three-quarter inch line to one inch, two hundred PSI. Concom, no comment. Assessors, no comment. Amy Lowell. This is regarding the referral request dated five twenty-three nineteen fourteen Beatrice Avenue wastewater division response. Dear zoning board, the following are the wastewater division's comments on the zoning board's referral request for this property. The property is in the new Silver Beach Sewer Service Area. The town's new Silver Beach bylaw allows properties in the NSB Service Area up to three bedrooms by right. Beyond three bedrooms, a variance is required. Variances are only to be granted by the Board of Selectmen in case of unusual and substantial hardship. See excerpts from the bylaw below when they give excerpts. The plan shows raising of the current two-bedroom home and construction of a four-bedroom home. Expansion beyond three bedrooms is not allowed by right under the new Silver Beach Sewer Service Area bylaw and variance pursuant to section one eighty forty-six of the bylaw must be requested of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Fire department, no comment. And there are three letters of support.
For the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicant's Tom and Colleen Nicholson, the owners of fourteen Beatrice Street in North Falmouth. Mr. and Mrs. Nicholson are here with us this evening. They're seeking to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming structure and to build a new entirely conforming dwelling. This property is located at the corner of Beatrice and Hunt Streets in the new Silver Beach area of town. The lot is just over ten thousand square feet at ten thousand two hundred and eighty-five, and it's in the residential C zoning district. The Nickelsons have owned this property for fifteen years and have recently made it their primary residence. They're hoping that the children and grandchildren will visit on a more regular basis, so in order to do so, they need to make some changes to the existing structure to make it more suitable for their family and their needs. The existing house is a one-story dwelling with two bedrooms, three if you count the office. The footprint is two thousand seven hundred and forty-nine square feet and includes a carport. It's non-conforming as to lot coverage by structure. It's twenty-six point seven percent where twenty percent is allowed by right and up to twenty-five percent is allowed by special permit. The existing ridge height is approximately fifteen feet. What they're proposing is a three-bedroom dwelling, and it should be noted the plans were revised following Ms. Lowell's comments to reduce it from four bedrooms to three. A three-bedroom dwelling, which will increase the living space by adding a second floor. There will be an attached garage. The ridge height will be proposed to be twenty-seven and a half feet. This dwelling will meet all of the setback requirements, and it will decrease the lot coverage by structure from twenty-six point seven percent down to twenty-two point one percent, which is a pretty sizable decrease. Given that this is a corner lot, they obtained, we did obtain a front yard designation from the building commissioner in which he found that the front yard setback to Beatrice Street was the applicable front yard for zoning purposes. That existing setback is thirty-five feet and proposed is thirty-one feet nine inches, well over the twenty-five that's required. These changes will increase, improve the usefulness of the site significantly. It will, will be a three-bedroom house. There's no new non-conformity created and is an elimination of the non-conforming lot coverage by structures. Whereas the lot coverage by structure will be twenty-two point one percent, which is still above the twenty percent allowed by right, this does require a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash sixty-nine E. That section holds that this board can grant a special permit to allow for lot coverage greater than twenty percent but less than twenty-five, and asks you to consider the size and the height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, the impacts of views and vistas, and the effect of nitrogen on local embayments. As noted, the proposed lot coverage by structure is twenty-two point one percent, which is well within the permissible range. The lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking will be thirty-seven point six percent, which is below the forty percent allowed by right. There's no impact on views and vistas from a public way. This is essentially at the end of a dead-end street. The proposed ridge height will be twenty-seven and a half feet, as I mentioned, well below the thirty-five feet allowed by right. With regards to the size and height of the structure, we did submit a lot comparison worksheet showing the forty-two properties within three hundred feet of this, this particular site. Of those forty-two, nine had a larger footprint and nineteen had a, had a greater growth building area. What that's saying is essentially, when considered in comparison with the neighborhood, this is well within the established parameters. There's no effect on nitrogen as it'll be a three-bedroom home that's connected to the new Silver Beach Sewer Area. Relative to the bylaw, this proposed raise and rebuild has no adverse effects and certainly no adverse effects that could overbalance the beneficial effects. The only existing dimensional non-conformity is going to be eliminated, no new non-conformity is created, there really are no detriments to the project. We did submit some revised plans, and admittedly, we, we submitted them yesterday, which I know is sooner to the hearing than the board likes. The only changes to those plans were the addition of dry wells in a drainage area off the driveway in response to engineering's comments. So those are the only changes to the plan that we have up here and that was submitted yesterday. For these reasons and given these considerations, I believe this board can and should grant a special permit. I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Clower, and I'll just appoint James as a voting member on this. James, do you want to start us off? Do you have any questions?
At this time.
Okay, Jerry?
I have a minor question. I mean, I like the project overall. The shed seems to be non-conforming at one point nine feet.
So.
Are you going to take it down or move it?
No, the shed will be remaining. Shed, shed will be remaining there.
So that they're going to go through all this other expense, but they want the shed to stay the same?
I'm sure if the shed had to move to three feet off the property line, we could find a way to get that done.
Okay.
Given the size, I think, given the size being under a hundred square feet, it's only going to require to have a three-foot setback. So I'm sure if that's a condition of the board that they, we could find a way to make that happen.
Ed, anything?
As long as the comments from the engineering are reflected in the drawings, I don't have any problems to be improving the neighborhood.
Bob?
No, just for clarification, what was the height again?
The proposed height is twenty-seven and a half feet.
And on the revised plans where they brought it back in, were two bedroom, was that the change of the playroom and home office?
They, they removed.
Were you opening the areas or?
Yeah, they removed one of the bedrooms on the second floor and changed that into a playroom, and even the closets were moved to be exterior hallway closets.
Okay, and then you did the four, the cased opening, right?
Mm-hmm.
No questions?
Mary, anything?
I have no questions.
Okay. Any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? Anyone at all? All right, seeing none, back to the board.
I, I just, just one more quick question. On the home office, is that also a four-foot cased opening?
It is. That's shown, if you'll follow the mouse over here, it is shown right here as a four-foot cased opening. I think the playroom is actually larger, I think the playroom is over five feet cased opening.
And was, was there a basement?
Uh, I don't. Yes.
Is there any finished base in the basement at all?
No.
It's on.
So it's not a flood zone?
It's flood zone X.
You can just.
Just confirming.
How would the board like to proceed?
Close the hearing?
Already asked.
I must have been.
No one's here for this.
Oh, no one's here for that.
So motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
Right, Bob, and I think I heard James first. How would you like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Bob and Jerry, findings?
It meets two forty dash sixty-nine E, two forty dash three C, two forty dash two sixteen. Not more substantially detrimental, increases utilization. There's been a front yard designation for Beechers Street. Lot coverage calculations were submitted, and it's within the established parameters for the area.
It's approved by the Wastewater Superintendent, not needing a variance.
The project was reduced to a three bedroom, so it now conforms to the NSB sewer system. Second-floor playroom and office have four-foot cased openings. Drywalls were added to the plan per engineering comments. The setback on Beechers is above the twenty-five feet required. Hunt Street is fourteen point six. The lot coverage will be twenty-two point one percent. And building height is twenty-seven and a half feet.
How do we feel about that shed? Jerry?
I, I mean, I, I guess I don't have a strong feeling. I just feel that, given all the other costs, and I think it's pretty easy, in my opinion, it's easy to move the shed. I'd like to have the shed come into compliance.
Not the hill I'm going to die on.
Neither am I.
So we could.
It's up to the rest of the board members.
So we could add that to the conditions. We also want to condition that the office and playroom keep the four-foot cased opening. Per plans, no more than three bedrooms. We need to add in that one engineering comment regarding the driveway, and Noreen, can you could just take that off of the referral?
Classification. They are already tied in, so there's no need to have the sewer line. They have to be tied in, if Amy said it was okay.
They're already tied in.
The engineering referral should be made as a finding as well.
Yeah, we'll put it as a finding too.
If it hasn't already been done.
Per plans, per revised plans.
Bob, did you include the water main update, upgrade?
Yeah, we'll add that to the, we'll add that into conditions, the water department finding. If they need an upgrade in service to a one-inch. Two hundred PSI.
Anything else for findings or conditions?
I think that's it.
It's pretty good. All right, so much new approval was made by Bob and seconded by Jerry. All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll take a five minute. Next, we have application thirty-five dash nineteen, Van Curran, thirty-three Pheasant Lane, East Falmouth. It's an appeal of the building commissioner regarding the inability to obtain zoning enforcement for a non-buildable lot. And before we open this hearing, I just wanted to disclose that each board member has executed a disclosure under Massachusetts general law, each stating that each of us would be fair and impartial due to the fact that the applicant is Ed Van Curran, who is a voting member on the board, and just polling everyone, if you could just say yes in the affirmative that you've executed the disclosure and that you would find yourselves fair and impartial regarding this application.
James Morris, I have executed a disclosure, and I believe that it would be fair and impartial. I will be fair and impartial, excuse me.
I, Jerry Patomas, I will be fair and impartial and have executed a written disclosure.
All right, and I've done the same, and I think that I would be fair and impartial regarding this application.
I, Robert Dugan, have also filled out a disclosure, and I will be fair and impartial.
I'm Mary Berry, have filled out a disclosure and will be fair and impartial.
Okay, and since we do have an issue with the amount of board members, we'll appoint Mary as a voting member, just because I've been going back and forth with both alternative members, so thank you for that. And let's see here, we do have the building commissioner here tonight. I do believe there's an attorney who submitted some paperwork regarding this application, and.
Procedural question?
I'm sorry?
Procedural question?
Yes.
Just to get, does Ed have to recuse himself?
Yes.
That's interesting.
He's still here.
Ed's still here, so he'll be.
So before we open.
Yes. Thank you. Attorney Summers?
Yes.
Thank you.
I believe that he does continue his.
Well, he, I, I agree.
Okay.
So Ed, you'll be recusing yourself from this?
Okay.
Yes.
May I approach?
You may.
Not that I want to steal Rod's thunder, but I wanted to first address as a point of order that it is our position that the board doesn't have jurisdiction to hear this appeal, because the appellant failed to file his claim in a timely manner. There's ample case law on record. I provided the board with a letter stating our position, and it is my understanding of reading a great deal of case law that standing must be addressed first before any underlying issues can be addressed. And I can go through the timeline in terms of notice and the statutes and the case law that speak to when one has to appeal.
Before you might address those points, you did submit a correspondence to the board that was dated yesterday?
Yes.
And within our board policies and procedures, we do have a note in there that information from any party, any party at all, not just the applicant, but anything must be received less than one week prior to a public hearing.
Okay.
And that's just so we can obviously review all the matters ahead of time. Most of us do have day jobs. We're not, not just retirees on the board, no, no offense to anyone who's retired on the board.
Just retirees.
You know what I mean, Jerry.
It'll never work as hot.
So that might be an issue too, in terms of reviewing your correspondence to the board.
Understood. So my apologies, I am new to this venue, so I did not know of that. I guess I would ask perhaps that if we, if the board needs time to review this, because again, it is my very strong position that the board lacks jurisdiction to hear this appeal. That if that can't be discussed this evening because of not having time to have reviewed the materials that I provided, that we continue it until the board can do so.
And if you don't mind, I'll just poll the board in terms of what they think about Attorney Summers' correspondence, in terms of our rule receiving anything one week in advance.
I think.
I know I got it this afternoon, I was able to look it over quick, but.
I think the rule is probably fairly straightforward from what I read in other cases with the town about standing. My concern is that I would have, if I had in time, I would have liked to have Frank Duffy's opinion on this. Notwithstanding that, I think we probably could go forward to hear some of the arguments. The applicant could hear some of the arguments, and we'll probably have a continuation till we get Frank Duffy's input.
My issue with that is, having read a lot of case law, including a case that involved this very board, where an appeal was heard when there was no standing and no jurisdiction, it would, you know, potentially muddy the waters and, you know, bring forth issues where, again, it has to be established, and the case law is very clear on this point that you cannot move forward and hear an underlying appeal if the appellant does not have standing.
But what harm does it, if we make no decision? In my opinion, we're going to need to continue it. And if it comes back that you are in fact right, then the next time we meet, we'll have been determined by our town council that we have no legal standing, and I see no harm being done. I guess you could appeal the fact that we're approving the building commissioner's decision in this, so I think it's we're academic saber rattling.
Sure. That's fine. Understood.
Anyone else's opinion regarding?
Well, I haven't had time to read the whole correspondence, but, you know, we've dealt with some of these before. I think that we will have standing, but if you want to hear from town council to find out what his opinion is, my concern is that there were two previous filed decisions on the same parcel. Both filed as non-buildable. So if you want to continue, I don't know what our schedule is, but I'd want to see it sooner than later.
But would you agree to discuss it tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I don't really see the harm of it if it's, if we're found out that we have no standing at that point, the meeting's over.
Yeah, we could.
At least we could start.
I mean, we could disagree with town council, I don't know what the likelihood would be in this specific legal case, but I'd like to hear the arguments. Sorry, I said that three times.
So I would, I'd be willing to proceed tonight.
Yeah. This issue has come up before, especially with regard to appealing building commissioner's decisions, and we've found standing in the past, and we've continued with hearings. But maybe we could preserve any sort of inquiry that Attorney Summers has. Jerry, like, maybe if we could ask town council regarding that and possibly get in, we could continue tonight, but keep in mind that we could get another date for town council's opinion.
Yeah, that.
Without actually coming to a decision tonight, that's always possible.
That's what my intent was, that given the strong opinion of council, that I wouldn't want to act without our town council weighing in.
Mary, anything?
I would agree with that.
Okay. All right, so we can. Attorney Summers, so we'll, we'll take your correspondence under consideration.
Okay.
Reach out to town council, but we, and at least initially, we'll proceed tonight.
Okay. Guess I'll give the chair back to Rod.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
So, okay, open?
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't even open yet, did we? Because we had to get all that out of the way.
And the voting, and the voting members.
It's going to be Mary.
So, application number thirty-five dash nineteen, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Master General laws, you are hereby notified that Edward T. Van Curran of East Falmouth, Mass. has filed an appeal with the Falmouth Town Clerk pursuant to Master General laws, chapter forty-eight, section eight and fifteen, and two forty dash two of two, two oh two of the Code of Falmouth, appealing the building commissioner regarding inability to obtain enforcement action for a non-buildable lot. The subject property is thirty-three Pheasant Lane, East Falmouth, Mass. Map forty, section eleven, parcel zero zero five, lots zero one three. Referrals did go up, but there's no comment from planning. There was a letter. So I would like to read a letter into the file just for timeline. So, May eighteenth, twenty nineteen, this is regarding the building permit issued for a house at thirty-three Pheasant Lane, East Falmouth, Mass. And it is from Edward T. Van Curran to the administrator. Dear Mr. Stockman, this letter is to request that the zoning board appeals to issue a stop-work order to the contractor for the house at thirty-three Pheasant Lane, East Falmouth, and return the lot to its original non-buildable status. Building permit number two zero one eight dash zero two four one eight zero was issued on twelve twenty-seven, two thousand eighteen. On February fourth, twenty nineteen, at one thirty PM, I notified the building commissioner Rod Palmer that the parcel of land at thirty-three Pheasant Lane was not buildable lot. As of this date, he has taken no action to respond to this information, but is doing inspections and approving construction, so work can continue. The basis for this request is the following. One, there was decision of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, appeal number twenty-one dash ninety-four, lot thirteen G, Pheasant Lane, thirty-three Pheasant Lane, and it was to deny the property as a buildable lot. The board vote was to deny the appeal, thereby upholding the building commissioner's determination dated March fifteenth, nineteen ninety-four. See attachment one. Two, decision of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, number twenty-two dash ninety-four, was to deny the variance request to allow the construction of one single-family dwelling on lot thirteen and G, Pheasant Lane, also known as thirty-three Pheasant Lane, that was dated May twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-four. Three, Falmouth Planning Board decision dated September fourth, nineteen ninety-one, for subject property was petition of Mildrex Inc. for a special permit under section three four two six of the Falmouth zoning bylaw, which was hereby denied. There are two cases remaining in land court which have never been decided. On February fifteenth, twenty nineteen, the building commissioner told me that the builder said he was stopping work until issue has been determined. On February twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, town council recommended the building commissioner report this to the current owner, and litigation should be resolved before the building department issues a building permit. Attachment four is a detailed log of actions taken to this point for the last fourteen weeks, and he gave some additional information. And there's also information, a timeline versus a building permit given out, inspections, deliveries, calls, et cetera. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Palmer?
Rod Palmer, building commissioner. I'm not sure what I have to contribute at this point. I've never issued a cease and desist on this project, never issued a stop-work order. Maybe for sequence purposes, it might be best if Mr. Van Curran articulated. Although this, the letter was read, I think perhaps it would be, I think it might be easier for me if Mr. Van Curran articulated his reasons for it. What I would like to explain is, when a building permit application is submitted to the building department, we analyze, we recognize the documents that are included, from building permit plans to chronology of a lot, if it's a non-conforming lot, and it's a protected lot, we analyze that chronology. Uh, we analyze that chronology that's within the application. There may be other information out there that we're unaware of, but for the purposes of issuing a building permit, we analyze what's there. And based on the information that was in this building permit application, it was my opinion that it was a protected lot, therefore a building permit was issued. Uh, Mr. Van Curran did come in to my office um two or three times, um maybe two or three times perhaps, uh and discussed it. Um, it's not my position to file an appeal for a neighbor who might be aggrieved by the construction of a house. We receive phone calls and complaints on a daily basis. Houses additions and projects that are being done by neighbors and uh it's not uncommon for neighbors to ask us to stop the project. Uh, it's their responsibility to file an appeal, it's not mine, so um I'm not sure what else um I might add or questions you might have for me.
If the information before you has an error by omission, because you have to rely on what's in front of you, okay? If that is missing, do you feel that your ability to issue, if there is critical information missing, uh that would pre- prohibit you from uh issuing the permit or reconsidering it? I mean, it would appear that on one set of facts, uh permit was issued, uh some people think it was correct, therefore indicates, uh there could be a situation where maybe you made an egregious error based on the facts and, or the facts in front of you led you to an error that would have otherwise rendered a different decision by you.
Possibly.
So I guess without us knowing what's in that building permit application-
Situations such as this, where it may have gone before the zoning board of appeals for a special permit and then perhaps a variance. That information, um, you know, unlike a variance that's granted or a special permit that's granted, it's recorded at the registry of deeds. These things that, that are defeated are not recorded. Um, you know, I, I think it happened twenty-five years ago perhaps. And, and you know, I, I, I believe at some point it went to land court. I don't know where it stands in land court today. I don't know if it's been dissolved, I, I don't know.
So this is the muddying of the waters with facts?
Yeah, if there's some, you know, infectious validity that I'm unaware of, then I'm unaware of it.
That's, that's a fair statement.
Is there any tracking of when these decisions come in that somehow get into your computer? So that when someone comes in with a building-
Well, there, there was, from what I understand, um you could request information from Mr. Duffy. But I think there may have been a file that was lost, or I, I don't know. I know town council was involved in the uh land court um matter. And he had a file, but I think, I, I don't know if it was misplaced, lost, when, when perhaps his office moved, I don't know. Thought I'd ask Frank.
I had another question.
So, so when someone applies to you with a buildable lot, what do they have to do to prove buildability?
Well, there's a number of different ways that a lot may be protected, so it's up to the applicant to demonstrate to us why it's a protected lot. And today in Falmouth, there's not a lot of, all the easy lots are gone. Most of the lots today are non-conforming and they're, uh, most of them are protected. Uh, so it's up to the applicant to demonstrate to us how it's protected. And typically, it's done by a land use attorney. They'll create a chronology with exhibits and clearly um define how it's protected. So that's what I see, that's what's typically done today. This application had just that, very clear chronology of the lot from its creation to today. Based on that information, uh it was and is my opinion that it's a buildable lot, legal lot.
Do we have all the, of the application at all in the file? Yeah, so, so you keep those, you keep those on file, right, the applications? When they, when they, like, they submitted chronology to there, so you would have, you would have that all on file somewhere?
Yes.
And you could submit it to us?
Yes.
I mean, assuming it's not too voluminous, so.
Not, at this very moment, no, but I, I can put it together.
I had another question. It is your discretion on what is buildable and not buildable versus the assessors' office or something like that. Uh, it's my understanding that you are the decider of buildable lot.
I am.
The other thing is that, in my experience, I have gone on GIS, looked up a property, and I can tell, I think it's GIS, interactive GIS, what permits have been issued for a particular lot. I don't know if it indicates what permits have been not denied. You don't, you strictly rely on what's submitted and don't do any external research.
Yeah, I, I rely on what's within the building permit application. We issue seven thousand permits a year. I don't have time to-
I just wanted to make sure, I guess I would ask that maybe Noreen look into that. Or I could look into it, but, or the opposing attorney look into.
So if you-
Which is in our interactive GIS file for permit history.
So if, if you see a parcel yourself, then they've, someone's gone through the process and you've come to the determination it's not buildable. Do you notate that somewhere so that future people down the road, if-
They'll, they'll receive a denial letter.
And is that filed at all with the building, I'm just asking, because in this case it's-
Yeah, well, so, so if a building permit application is denied, whether it be for zoning-related matters or structural matters, whatever be the case, uh that permit is denied, it can be appealed, it can be withdrawn. Some people withdraw them.
So in, in this case, with his notations throughout the files, that a previous building commissioner had made notations that, under his opinion, it wasn't buildable, would his notations be anywhere, or would that?
They could be. You know, would they be at my fingertips? You know, I, I don't know. You know, it's not something that, um, you know, I receive, you know, a hundred building permit applications for new houses this year. Do I seek out the history of that land? Whether it be an application that was submitted twenty or thirty years ago? No, I don't. I base my opinion on what is within that building permit application.
That's all I have right there.
Yeah. Any other questions for the building commissioner? Thank you. Ed, I guess since you're the applicant, if you wanted to weigh in at all?
You want me to go through the, the history? It was pretty well detailed by what uh Bob read off. Just to briefly hit the highlights, on the fourth of February, after I noticed the construction, or the clearing of the land and the hole was dug, I had done a little homework by going to the office and the zoning board office, and it took two minutes for the lady in the office to go on the computer and determine the two appeals that were, the two decisions that were denied or determined it was a non-buildable lot, the one for the special permit and the one for the variance. And that was twenty-five years ago. I knew the lots were empty, I knew the lots were non-buildable, only because of the real estate man that sold me the house in nineteen eighty-eight, said they were non-buildable. I took his word at it. When I came up on the, the end of January, I went to the office and then it was, it was, she printed it out and, or she got a copy of it within a few minutes. So at that point, on the fourth of February, I went and talked to Rod, said with a brief, here's the information you need to reconsider, the building permit, which was issued on the twenty-seventh of December. And he uh said, I'll look into it. On the eleventh of February, a week later, I went back because they had, uh, they poured the footings within a few hours after I left the office the first time. The, I went back a week later to see what the progress was, and uh he had asked me originally for my phone number, which I gave him. When I hadn't heard from him in a week, that's when I went back on the eleventh. He uh, he said that the zoning enforcement officer doesn't work on Mondays. I knew that, she works Tues- Tuesday, this Saturday. He said, she'll call you tomorrow. He called me the next day and said he was gonna get it resolved. You know, and back on Friday, when more work was proceeding, at one point, they had already taken the, at one point, they took the forms away that were there for the walls, foundation walls, and that, they were gone. And then a couple of days later, on a Sunday afternoon, the trucks come back with the forms and they were getting back to work. So that's when I went back the third time, and he said he was on his way to see town council Frank Duffy for some guidance. And uh, so the next step was Frank Duffy, his town council, answered, sent him an email ten days later and said, uh, we'd bring this up to the developer and make him aware of all of this. And at that point, get that all resolved before you wish for a building permit, which he'd already issued, the building, the building commissioner had already issued the building permit two months earlier than that. So I thought we were working together to get this project stopped in the light of the fact that there was two, it was a non-buildable lot twice and also the planning board. And so with that, I thought we were in the right direction to get the project stopped until it was resolved through whatever system of appeals by the developer, the builder. And uh, that didn't happen, and finally, I sent a letter to, it would be a record to building commissioner, and fourteen days went by and he did not respond. So we're here today, twenty-three and a half weeks later from when we started this. That's kind of a summary of it.
Any questions for Ed?
No questions.
Do you recall what day that you sent the letter in to the building commissioner? I'm sure it's in the chronology, but I just don't have it in front of me.
Twenty-first of May. His hand delivered to his office, stamped, received by the young lady.
And on February fourth, two thousand nineteen, was that the first day that you noticed clearing of any land and the, and the hole dug?
The fourth was the day I delivered a piece of paper to the building commissioner, giving him the decision, the numbers, the dates, when the decision was determined it was a non-buildable lot twice. And that was in black and white, highlighted on a piece of paper I handed him. At that point, I thought, stop the job. When he didn't, when the third time I went to see him, when he was on his way to see the building, to the, see the town attorney, town council, I said, why don't you just give him a stop work order, cease and desist, whatever you call it, whatever you want to do. And he said, if I do that, the developer will sue the town. That's not the way it works. There's a process and appeals and, so I didn't want to get in an argument. He was gonna go see a lawyer, so, town, company lawyer, town lawyer. And uh, yeah, here we are.
I had a question for Ed, or maybe through the board, uh, through, through the secretary. When was the permit issued? This is just muddying the water with facts as if, if the, when does the thirty-day appeal period possibly start from the issuance of a building permit?
So the building permit was issued uh December twenty-seventh of two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
The app, the-
That, no, I-
No, but there was- No, but there was a letter sent out from the builder to the neighborhood. Uh, let me just find the letter first and then you can- Just give me one second.
The letter from the developer to the neighborhood was March fourteenth.
You want to say?
I received it on the sixteenth of March.
Maybe it doesn't matter what it says.
Is the February fourth date the actual date you knew that a building permit had been issued?
So you get?
Is the February fourth date the date, what, what is the date that you knew that a building permit had issued for this property?
Oh, sometime before that. It was the fourth, when I went to him with a piece of paper. And that also, and that piece of paper was the permit number, the building permit number that he had issued on the twenty-seventh of Ja- of December.
So there was a, a letter sent out to the neighborhood, March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, from Pheasant Lane LLC. Says regarding thirty-three Pheasant Lane, East Falmouth, Mass. Dear neighbor, I hope this finds you well. I am the owner of the property known as thirty-three Pheasant Lane and just recently obtained a building permit for the property. I recently began work on the property and hope to complete the project by early summer, bearing in mind how busy the summer is for everyone. However, even taking that into account, I will do everything I can to minimize the impacts of any construction on the surrounding area as much as possible. Whereas you are a nearby property owner, I just wanted to reach out to you directly so you can contact me if there's any problems, questions, or concerns. Thank you for time and understanding. I look forward to meeting everyone as I settle into the area. So it appears on the letter from the last sentence that maybe the developer planned on living in the property. Um, there is a submittal of a timeline where the property was put on the market for sale and a copy of the um, of the listing price, et cetera. The company on the actual copy says Kinlan Grover Real Estate, thirty-three Pheasant Lane, East Falmouth, Mass. Three bedroom, two bath, single family, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So if it was listed for sale, I don't know what the uh last sentence in the letter refers to, that he's settling into the area.
Is that it?
That's it.
Ed, at what point in time, uh maybe a date, anything like that, did you notice clearing of land, excavation, anything of that nature?
It was uh, it was the last week in Ju- in January.
And what exactly did you see being done?
The, the land had been clear cut and the, and the hole was uh excavated, ready to pour the footings. And then on the fourth, when I went to see the building commissioner that evening, by six o'clock, they had poured the footings.
Any other questions for Ed?
Not at his time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Summers, I think it's only fair to allow you some time to respond, if you are prepared to do that tonight.
I am. So I think uh it's great that we established the timeline. Because I gotta reiterate my first point of standing. So um, from our position, what happened was um, I, as Mr. McLoane's attorney, received notice- received notice around February twelfth that someone had come forward with an issue on the property. Um, at that point, uh, within the next few days, I got in touch with town council to discuss the matter. To be frank, he said he had to look through and find a very old file, um, with these appeals. They were not clearly readily available to him. He and I had a discussion, and I was very direct and asked if they would be putting a stop work order on or revoking the permit. And the answer was no. We then had a discussion about how to possibly proceed. The reason that Mr. McLean provided notice, he provided notice to thirty-three to thirty-five abutters, including Mr. Van Keren, who had already received notice. Constructive, as he said, he saw it happening. We also, in my letter, which you've received and will read, the most generous concept of notice is February twelfth. And it is our very strong opinion that he needed to make a formal appeal to the board discussing that he was an aggrieved party. Sixty-eight days later, we're here. We noticed the abutters to put them on notice as well, in case no one was around, if there were snowbirds, so that we had a date certain, at which we knew, because it was our understanding from the town that they were standing behind the permit. So that was why I started this discussion with the issue of standing and why it is so important. It is very well-established case law. So I just wanted to, uh, that takes you through the, the timeline. Um, and I think the Connors case, and again, uh, this is all, um, in my letter, um, but is the most on point. It was a, uh, Supreme Judicial Court ruling in two thousand eleven regarding standing. And essentially, the holding says, um, where aggrieved party has adequate notice of the building permits issuance, he or she is required to appeal the, to the appropriate zoning boards within thirty days of the permits issue date. This is pursuant to zoning laws GL four, forty A, section eight and fifteen. There is also an alternative, which is, there could be a possible later appeal, um, under section seven. Connors stands for the preposition that you cannot use section seven, which is, uh, lack of an enforcement action, as a backdoor way, if you had notice of the building permit. That is the definitive point of notice. And the board, in my opinion, pursuant to case law, cannot hear and take up an appeal where the appellant does not have standing. Thank you. Questions?
Sure. Well?
Did, did you, um, did you represent the applicant when he was submitting his application?
I did.
Did you do a title search on the property?
Yes.
And you didn't come up with the denials from the zoning board?
Absolutely not, nothing of record.
So when this applicant has, has normally bought property within the town, he's developed different areas, um, is it common practice that he checks with the zoning board for his process?
The process that I have done with, uh, Mr. McLean in the past has been exactly the same. I write a letter of buildability and I provide it to the building commissioner. And I have done that on various properties, permits have been issued.
So when you did the title search in the property, how far back did you go?
Fifty years. There is no document of record on title to suggest any problem, because as we've discussed, there would only be something like a variance, if it were granted, would be recorded. Otherwise, there was just these, these old cases that I didn't know about, I did not check. I have not done so on other matters. It has always been my understanding that part of the application, my part as the attorney, is title, which I did, and a letter of buildability, which I provided. It is not, I don't control the filing system of the town and what is in their files. And it seemed to come as a surprise to Mr. Duffy when this all came up, because this case was so old. And he, in fact, had trouble finding relevant information to provide to me.
On the, on the letter that he gave notice to the neighbors, when he says that he's looking to settle in the neighborhood, was he ever planning on living there himself?
Uh, I, I think it was just a general statement of trying to be nice, um...
So that doesn't appear that you would be living there? And I only got the question, did, is there title insurance on the property?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Uh, just to piggyback off of what Bob was mentioning about the title search, was the title search done for both lots, since they're contiguous?
Um, so we search back in terms of ownership, but we don't do a title, so we do only search title on our own lot. So yes, I trace the deeds back in terms of my letter of buildability.
And how long has Mr. McLean been in possession of the property?
Um, since, uh, well, his, his, um, purchase was predicated, um, under the purchase and sale agreement from the former owner on the issuance of a building permit. So he purchased the property sometime after the building permit was issued in January. I don't have the date in front of me.
So, so his PNS was contingent upon the, the building?
Correct.
The building permit?
Was there ever disclosure on that prior owner of the previous denials?
Absolutely not.
And your research didn't include the, finding the two court land cases?
No.
Do you know what, I don't, we don't need to know the details, but what is the, the basis of the land court cases?
Um, I don't actually, I don't actually...
Okay, so that might be something, could be of interest.
Yep.
Uh, if I understand, title insurance, and I get these mixed up, you go to both, both sides in the registry, recorded and unrecorded. One is far more rigorous than the other. When we put a lien on a piece of property?
Yes.
It goes on the recorded side, and I have no idea what, they call the other side recorded?
The...
The land court side.
Yeah, it's the land court, and it's two different, um...
So which title, which court did you go to?
Uh...
Because there've been cases where it's registered in one place and not the other.
Correct. Um, I, I'm gonna, I, I would have to go back and, and look through. I believe it's un- unregistered land, so it's not in land court. But that's not, that, that's not dispositive, that's not a, a decision we make or how we search title. Either a land is in land court or registered, um, recorded land.
But I guess what you're saying, that maybe you're saying it wasn't needed to be in land court.
Correct.
But if it was in land court, it could be a different situation. But you don't know. I don't mean to put words in your mouth.
Right.
So it'd be something we may be interested in.
If, if needed, would you be able to, um, submit a copy of the title search results?
Yes.
And what is your understanding on, on this case law? If the building commissioner, in fact, made a mistake, it should not have been issued. Uh, is it for purposes of Connor, that's too bad the town made a mistake and your client has standing to build? I mean, you know, there's some cases where if the facts submitted weren't correct, you know, the underlying permit may not be valid.
My understanding of the case law is it is just about standing. It is just about notice, it is just about when somebody has the time to bring the claim.
Not the validity of the claim.
Correct.
So process-type issue.
Correct.
And, uh...
But an important one, because, again, it's one that, um, builders, owners rely on. Um, and the idea is one of equity, that, um, you know, uh, you, you can't sit and wait, for example. That's why we have these, these notice provisions.
But there, in other cases, I can think of federal permitting where the permits are shielded, assuming the facts listed in the permit application were factual and correct. If the facts listed in the building permit application was flawed, would that, and maybe there's no case history.
Correct.
That would mean, uh, the building commissioner did not have material information to make a decision. In that case, the notice, which I think all he has to do is publish it downstairs, may be flawed.
Um, I don't, again, my understanding of the, 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 uh, case law is very clear, um, that, that, the courts, the zoning boards, whatever body it is, um, won't even go to the underlying, um, dispute at hand, um, unless someone has standing to bring a claim.
Okay.
So that's the, the, you know, the, the case law. Um, and, and, and most of these cases say we're not even going to talk about the underlying dispute, um, because we can't, because the issue of standing needs to be resolved.
Counsel, I read, I read your, the, the letter you submitted to the board, and then as I started to get into it, just some real research, the rain knocked out my internet, plus it knocked out my, uh, LexisNexis access. Um, I just wanna understand your argument, and I definitely wanna submit this to town council to have him weigh in on this. Uh, it comes down to essentially whether the notice was given to the building inspector in a timely manner, uh, and what essentially an appeal is, whether, and I guess the question I have is, is, is there any case law, or did you come here and you do research, that if a member approaches the building commissioner and states, "Hey, this is an unbuildable lot, you need to do your job," um, would that constitute timely notice to the building? Does that push now, does that now push this issue back to the building official to take action?
Yeah, they, no, actually, there's, there's case law on point, that where people have spoken to the commissioner, who have written to the commissioner, and then have later appealed, but have appealed too late, and they have been thrown out for lack of standing.
And I, this is, I, I think, a very, not unlike a, an eviction, it's very date-driven.
Correct.
Uh, the reason I ask is that the one case holding I was able to find before the unit went down, uh, essentially talks about that until there's a written determination of non-action on behalf of the building official, the clock essentially for the appeal doesn't run out, uh, so...
No, so Connors is the leading case.
Okay.
Um, and to be clear, um, it, 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 it clears up any confusion to that, that matter. So, um, a, a building commissioner could, could simply not respond to someone whatsoever. Um, and that does nothing to, um, to toll their, their, their clock. They can't say that, that, you know, it, it is, it always goes back to the time of the appellant's notice of the issuance of the permit that is being appealed in this case.
Anything else, James?
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Counsel.
Anything else from the board at this time? Attorney Summer, thank you.
Thank you.
Turn us to members of the public. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? A lot of people out there, nothing for this either?
We'll see what you have out there.
Oh. All right, back to the board then.
All right, so I think we're gonna need to continue, but we're gonna need specific information. So what I would like to see is, I'd like to see the building permit application, I'd like to see the title search history. I guess we don't have contact information from the previous owner, but from the decisions that are in there on the denials, the previous owner knew about the non-buildable status of the lot. It would be nice if the previous owner could weigh in, but I don't know if that's even accessible. I'd like to know if there's any notations at the building department regarding all Mr. Gore's comments in the previous decisions, if any of the decisions were actually recorded, and also weigh in from Frank regarding if we have standing and what, what his opinion is on standing of the appeal application.
Okay.
I agree with, uh, Bob. I think, as we all said, maybe the same thing in different manners. I know it's not traditional, if, uh, the zoning administrator could, in the email to Frank, sort of outline what you think we're asking for, to make sure you've captured what we really are asking for. You, you know what I mean? But sometimes a, a word here, here or there could be, uh, and I hate to come back in a week and say, "Well, that's not quite what I was asking for." I think the standing is the important thing, but I don't know what the, you know, the basis is on the, the land court and some of these other things.
So we're, we're asking for an opinion from Frank Duffy about the issue of standing?
Yes, but I'm not sure all the issues to lay out correctly.
And at the same time, start getting the additional paperwork doing.
I think a minimum of an analysis of, um, counsel's letter to the town as to whether or not he's either concurring.
Provided to Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, Mr. Palmer from, uh, Building Department, if you could kindly forward the buildability worksheet that you referenced tonight? And anything else you might have regarding?
Yeah, anything they submitted regarding their proof that the lot was buildable.
I'll make a complete, I'll make a complete copy of the entire building plan.
We appreciate it.
And how much time do you need?
Thank you.
How much time do you need?
What's our next, uh...
And Attorney Summer, if, if you could provide, uh, the title search that you did with, uh, research of the property?
And I think we'd ask for maybe a capsulation of the land court, if it's relevant or, you know, maybe it has nothing to do with the information in front of us.
And of course, Noreen will reach out to town council regarding the issue of standing and...
What are we looking at timewise?
With regard to Attorney Summers.
We're proposing August twenty-second, given that August first is swamped.
So then I would make a motion to continue to August twenty-second.
Is that date convenient to the, to Attorney Summers and her client?
Are you available, Attorney Summers?
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Is it August twenty-second?
August twenty-second is our soonest date.
August twenty-second?
So again, then...
Nothing sooner.
There's nothing sooner than twenty-second.
There's a full agenda ahead of us.
I just wanna make, uh, it's not a disclosure, but it could be important, depending if, uh, Ken is listening. I go under the knife for back surgery, potentially August eighth. I will be in no condition to attend a hearing three weeks later.
Well, so Ken, as long as we can go under that rule.
Yeah, that's, that's just so the optical will know.
Under the law's rule, he can...
Yeah, review.
He can review all the information.
Because most people want five sitting members.
So if that becomes an issue, he can definitely do that. All right, so August twenty-second.
So again, then I'd make the motion to continue to August twenty-second.
Motion to continue, August twenty-second, made by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mary, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That leaves us with our open meeting items. I'm not sure if anyone's particularly interested in hanging around for that.
So minutes to July eleventh?
We're gonna table the minutes from July 11th. For our next meeting. Number two was already taken care of at the beginning of the meeting. We have, under number three, board administrative approval of 37-17 FWG LLC 125 Falmouth, Woods Hole. Everyone, we, yeah. We're, we're still having our meeting. If you could kindly take your conversation outside of the room, greatly appreciated. Thank you. So we do have board administrative approval of 37-17 FWG 125 Woods Hole Road in East Falmouth. It is a request for a one-year extension of the special permit.
Any exclamation for, explanation for the request?
There is a letter attached with the file, but basically they've met the legal requirement to request the continuation in advance of the expiration of the appeal period.
Okay, so I would make a motion to approve the request for the one-year extension of that special permit.
Motion to extend made by Bob. Second. Second, second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have application 22-19 Green Ocean Cowwash LLC 187 T-Ticket Highway, discuss draft decision with possible vote. Requesting a continuance to August 1st for that.
Yes.
And would anyone like to make that motion?
So I'll make a motion to continue to August 1st.
Second. Okay, motion to continue made by Bob, second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number five, we have application 38-19 Bogosian Development LLC 587 Main Street in Falmouth, discussion of draft decision with possible vote.
And I will recuse from any discussion of this decision.
For the record, Bob's refusing himself regarding this.
I've got a receipt.
Do you want to appoint me, Mr. Chairman, or I was present through hearings?
Oh, I'm sorry?
I was present for the hearings.
Oh, thank you.
Question, and it might be up to us, or maybe to the applicant's counsel. What, oh, that's right, we just started a new hearing process, so you've been privy to the only hearing we've had.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Several, okay. I withdraw.
Noreen, any, would you like to start us off?
Yes, so I have provided everybody with a draft decision for your request at the last meeting.
Without going through this quickly, is the issue of drainage resolved in here? Is that something that's going to be resolved within the?
So there have been negotiations with the town with the intent to help the developer be able to finally get a certificate of occupancy. So the town engineer and the town planner are continuing to work with the developer. There has been a bond request for the work that is yet to be done, some of the work which can't take place until after Labor Day. So our decision essentially reflects the engineering requirements and the town planner's work.
I thought, I thought there was an open issue of runoff.
Yes, so the town engineer is gonna deal with that, and that will be a requirement that has to be met prior to sign off on the site plan for the C.O.
Okay.
And, and we, we submitted correspondence to, to, actually, two sets of correspondence today with, with town planner and Ms. Stockman and the town engineer. And essentially, the second one was like, fine, you, you know, this is, there, there was a question as to whether or not we had to, based on the previous decision. They said they wanted it done, so we said yes. It seemed prudent.
Is the drainage and engineering also subject to the bond?
Yes. And, and we, I, I'm actually in receipt of the entire $25,000 of the bond at my office. I didn't have a chance to submit it to the planning, uh, planning board yet, but I am in receipt of that check, so that, I'll make testimony to that effect.
From one escrow account to another.
Not, it hasn't even, it didn't, didn't even get the pass through mine, though. I don't make credit for it.
Can't get a millisecond of interest.
So has everyone had a chance to review the decision? Attorney Claw, if you.
I, I'll note, I did review the decision. I thought it was perfectly fine. So I, I appreciate Ms. Stockman having, giving me the opportunity to re- review it. I did so last evening. I thought it reflected the board's decision discussions last week, so again, we thank you for that.
Thank you.
I have no questions. I sent one to the zoning administrator. She had said that to reread it closely, my issue was covered.
Thank you for getting that done quickly, Noreen. There's a lot of people who've been very anxiously waiting for this.
Yes, again, if I haven't said it enough, thank you.
And Noreen, just a technical point here, with Bob refusing himself and another member not here, I think that would leave us with four?
Right, you would need.
Mary was appointed.
Yes.
So that would leave us with four unanimous vote, if we were to vote it.
Can Mr. Moore sit on this? Because I'm counting five in front of me.
He did not.
Well, he would, but he was here.
But I think, did you recuse based on?
No, I didn't recuse.
Relations, or just disclose?
I disclosed, and the chairman appointed Mary.
As a voting member.
She did not have a disclosure of a poten- of the appearance of a potential conflict.
So.
I mean, if you want to, for Mr. Claw's purpose, discuss what your intent for a vote is, based on the direction to me to draft a positive motion.
Sure. But my, my concern was if, if we were to vote it tonight, would it be four voting members, since Mary was appointed?
Yes.
Okay.
Why, and maybe it's just too tight, why couldn't it be?
Although, actually, you can.
Jim, since he was here, and it's my understanding that if you're present, you can always vote. It, it's just, you know. And I.
I think it's fine.
Okay.
So it's fine for a five, for a five-person vote, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
I think it was, it was just something I had to flesh out.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not a parliamentarian by any stretch of the imagination, but I believe that, that, that is approv- allowable.
Okay. All right, so does anyone want to weigh in before we vote?
I, I, I think it's approvable, if, I think that's all, one person wants to, yeah.
I think it is, too.
As long as the $25,000 is in there, that, it is a ten to maybe, get it done.
As I noted, that's already been provided, so, and I'll be submitting that to the planning board tomorrow.
And thank you again to Noreen for all your hard work with this decision. I know that, uh, it was on the front burner, so thank you for all your hard work. And with that.
May I ask one question?
Yes.
You know, it was, I read through the engineers and all the letters in the file. The French drains that were being asked for, is that part of this or not, or it's question?
No, it's, 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 the, the French drains along, along the walkway and patio have always been agreed upon.
Okay.
The only, the only question that was, was being arisen was whether or not there was going to be a trench drain along the base of the walkway, but we've agreed to that.
You did agree, is that?
In correspondence with the engineering department today, we said.
Thank you, I just was unclear about that.
No, there was never a question about the French drain. That was, that was something that we proposed in order to address the drainage concerns.
All set? All right. So with that having been said, um.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Jerry, and we'll give that to James, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, five, zero.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Bob hanging out there?
Oh, he may have left. I don't know, maybe he's watching here.
His glasses are still here.
Oh, he's still here, he'll be back, he'll be back.
All right.
We'll wait for Bob. Oh, Dugan. Oh, yeah, he, he'll be back.
Oh, there he is, he was waiting outside.
Oh.
Very hard to see, I'll come outside.
Just go watch on TV.
Any board updates?
I mentioned my potential absence.
Yes.
So let all people know that.
And what's that?
I, I think it's gonna be.
Estimated date?
8th.
8th, August 8th, okay.
Do you know how long for, or?
How long are you gonna be on the I.R. for?
Probably three to four weeks. I mean, back, it's extensive back surgery, so, you know, my wife may be able to drive me here, but I'd say three to four weeks.
So you're definitely out for the 22nd and possibly September 5th as well?
Well, no, just so we'll know for people to watch on TV.
No, that's good to know.
Do we have a meeting on the 8th?
No, it's a Friday, I think. I don't even know when.
August 22nd, and then after that, September 5th.
August 1st, August 22.
All right, anything else for board updates?
Uh, no. There'll have, there'll be another recertification meeting, but it's.
In the works.
It's in the works, but I don't know if they'll keep it, because the town planner can't be here for the meeting.
Oh, okay. All right, number seven, reorganization of the board. So it's that time of year again that we reorganize the board and vote upon the officers, chairman, vice chairman, and clerk. Just so we, James and Mary, you, you two are new, so you might not have been aware of that, that every town board gets reorganized in July-ish.
I have no problem going ahead if we can do it, if it's appropriate to do it without Ken, any duty out of my nomination.
We could do what a lot of organizations do and give him all the jobs, since he didn't show up tonight.
Yeah, since he didn't, oh.
No, my recommendation would be the current structure, plus confirming, yeah.
Ken did weigh, Ken did weigh in. He texted me before the meeting, said he was sick and couldn't make it tonight, but if the board was so inclined, then he'd be happy to serve as vice chairman again. So I'd be happy to make that nomination in abstention. But we, we typically do this, we, we do secretary, vice chairman, and chairman, and.
So I'd be happy to.
I'll make a motion to nominate current, current chairman, the current acting secretary, and the current vice chairman.
Oh, we, we do it separately.
Oh, well, I'll do it.
One at a time.
So let's start with the chairman. I nominate Terrence Hurry as chairman of the.
Second.
A second. Being so formal with that. Okay, it was made by Bob and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. So in abstention, I will make the nomination of Ken Foreman as vice chairman.
Second.
Aye.
All right.
Hi.
By Jerry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One more slot.
Just me.
I'll make Bob Dugan as the clerk.
Nomination of Bob Dugan as clerk made by James as a second.
Second.
Second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Doing a good job.
So we can all keep our badges, since they wrote that on the badges.
Oh, I didn't even notice they did do that.
So we have saved the town money in reorganizing the badges.
All right, so the board is reorganized.
Well, it's nothing to do with your talent?
We won't touch that one.
Discussion of a future workshop. We need to get, we need to get that done.
So. And I know Jerry's gonna be out for a while, but I don't know if we can wait till September.
I, I have no objection to you moving. I would just send my
Oh.
issues in. I mean, there's a couple of administrative.
You could submit, yeah, you could submit in advance, so I, I, we really should, maybe everyone could throw in a date in August, because I think we really need to nail it down to August.
Yep, all right.
Um, I just need to know a little in advance, because I do a lot of stuff on Saturdays business-wise, so.
Yes, you do.
If I could get a couple of weeks' notice, that would be great.
So I have a way in New Mexico from August 7th through the 10th, other than that.
Oh, so why don't we, so what, let's, let's, uh.
Winter road race.
Uh, that was gonna be my next concern, that's the third Sunday.
So maybe we will be in September. Okay, so let's see.
Oh, the last weekend of August.
James, what, what, your way when?
Uh, the week of August 8th, I'll be way 8-7 through 8-10.
Okay, so where's my Sunday's point, okay, so the road race is the.
It's the 18th, 18th.
It's the 18th.
I'm running it, it's in my calendar.
Oh, are you? Congratulations.
So you should not be anywhere on the 17th. I say, so we want to just do the, want to do the 24th?
Yes, that's, that's a Saturday, correct?
It's always on a Saturday, unless anybody wants a different day.
Uh, Ken, Ken is watching at home, hi, Ken. Uh, he's requesting late September, probably due to his work schedule.
That's right.
So, um, well, then why don't we just schedule a late September now, just so it's in?
Sure.
Okay, so is, if Ken, Ken, would you like the 14th, 21st, or 28th of September?
Text us.
Please text in and let us know.
Well, we can always tentatively schedule it, right? So it's finally on the books.
Well, why don't we throw it in for the 21st, tentatively?
21st is nice.
And then that gives us plenty of time if we want to go one week before or after.
Ken's asking for the 28th.
Oh, he is watching.
He is.
Okay, we'll do the 28th, but Ken has to bring extra food.
Uh, for, for me, well, I might make it. Free food, I usually show up.
All right, so tentatively the 28th.
All right. Ken also says hi, and he'll bring the donuts. All right, so, number 28 is our workshop.
And then maybe, because it's so far in advance, maybe we could get a speaker.
Do we want a speaker?
I don't know, I, I just, you know, we've got two, two people on the board, and I don't know if there's someone would want to give us just a brief minor review of the 40B rules and regulations quick, because we're, but I think we're gonna be seeing a lot of them. Um, I personally, I would love to hear something from a landscape architect, if we know anybody. Just because we see so many of these plans that show plantings, and I don't think any of these plantings work half the time, because there just isn't space to put them in and they, they die out. So I would just personally like to know a little bit about, you know, what do they suggest down here, or planting plans, or what's good for screening, and that kind of thing.
Open invitation, since it is a public meeting. All right.
That's it.
For discussion, zoning recertification, we already discussed it, and any future agenda items?
Oh, next, I'll put on the agenda. There's a couple of issues that have come up on previous permits that may not be following what the regulations are, so I may want to put that on a future, just open meeting item, to see if we could
Okay.
have the administrator maybe send a letter just to s- just to notify the people and see, they may not be aware, or.
Of what?
Enforcement for violations.
Oh, for, yes, yeah.
Yeah, that, you know, some of the permits, you know, different people have taken over over time, and probably haven't paid attention, and.
So you feel, you feel comfortable sending that out?
Yes, I mean, whenever I'm notified about any issue, I do forward it to the building commissioner.
Okay.
I'm not sure where it goes from there.
Yeah, that might, that whole process may be.
Yeah, you know, maybe even Frank, or I don't know if we're gonna have assistant town council by then. I, I'd like a little more information on.
Yes, assistant town council is starting August 1st.
New hire?
Yes.
Do we know the name?
Irene.
I know her personally. She comes from Superior, Barnstable Superior Court, is a research attorney. She's very highly recommended and very capable of doing.
And what's her name, if it matters? Maybe the selectmen haven't approved her yet.
No, she, Frank has disclosed that she's starting August 1st.
And, her name?
Irene. Irene.
Irene.
Irene, okay.
Because where we don't have zoning enforcement right now, I'd like to have just the, maybe town council office can give us a very specific direction on if we decide to bring enforcement, because we can't hear an appeal of the building commissioner, how do we go about, is there a step for us, if we go to get our own counsel? Do they give us counsel? What's the process?
Yeah, and you'd agree, we have to submit a written, that seems to be the building.
Yeah, so.
If you don't submit a written request, it goes nowhere.
No, but in our case, it's a little different, because we can't submit one, because we can't hear the.
No, we could submit a written request, we may not be able to fund the attorney.
And the selectmen are aware, we, we get in those cases, so.
That's never been issued.
I just want to know how the process works with.
Oh, okay.
If we have to get outside counsel.
So that'll be placed on an agenda item somewhere.
Yeah, maybe next week.
All right.
Motion to adjourn? You're getting good, you.